I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. It is December 2nd, and this is a regular meeting for the city of Coeur d'Alene. Roll call, please.
English?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Gookin?
Yeah.
Miller?
Here.
Gabriel?
Here.
Evans?
Okay, could you rise for the pledge, please? Kenny, would you lead us, please?
Would. My pledge alleges to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kenny. Couple of thoughts for tonight. We have one public hearing, and if you're interested in that one, that's a CBDG, Community Grant Block Grant, and we need you to sign up if you'd like to speak. Also, there's two quasi judicial meetings. One is on the Stanley Hill Annexation. Again, we'd like to have you guys sign up for that if you want to speak to it. And then the Courteria Modification of Zoning is also back there. And I do have a list of people that are planning on speaking. So that's kind of the program for tonight. So any amendments to the agenda, council? Hearing none. We'll move on. This is public comments, and I have a list here of people who would like to speak. Rod Froesberg. Rod, welcome. Take a spot. You have three minutes, Rod.
I don't feel I'll be taking that much time, but I'd like to speak to the infrastructure of Coeur d'Alene and Courteria Annexation, or whatever it is. I would like to invite each and every one of you to come to Atlas Road and Kathleen at 3:00 to 5:00 on a business day and observe the gridlock that is there currently before we even think about this Courteria thing. I have been told by my uncle that this traffic can back up to clear from this stoplight at Kathleen to Nez Pierce. That's three blocks. And to add more traffic to that is beyond, beyond me. I hope you understand that this is going to take more infrastructure. Atlas Road is going to have to be turned into like a Ramsey Road in order to utilize or to handle this traffic that's supposedly, there's 400 and some units of coming into that place. And they're basically on a postage stamp lot, and until we all get jets and automobiles or whatever, this is unreasonable. And I hope something needs, some things need to be changed. I hope the city can figure out that, are we going to be proactive or are we going to be reactive? And this thing about more traffic coming on there, it's looking like it's going to be reactive more than proactive. And I think it needs to be addressed before this thing can ever be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Folks, this isn't a rally. We're here to kind of exchange ideas here, so we're listening, please. Loriele Rodak, Coeur d'Alene. Loriele, welcome.
I don't have a whole lot to say, other than we're Indian Meadows, we're not going away. As far as just a few people not wanting the traffic to go through, that's not true. It's pretty much all of us and the surrounding neighborhoods. And as a quick rebuttal to the tirade, I guess, whatever, about punching through all seven, that we should have known that that was what was going to happen. Yeah, we thought maybe it would happen, but we also thought it would be a continuation of the neighborhoods we already have. So if you look at it, it starts at, you know, smaller lots, then as you go in, it gets bigger, like half acres. Now we're at acres. So we thought perhaps, you know, if you're going to punch it through, it'd be acre lots, two acre lots, perhaps five acres, not an entire city. One of my neighbors grew up in a town in Montana that's about the size or population density of what you want to put there. And that's not what we want coming through. So yeah, be proactive, go around, and don't ruin up our little neighborhood, our little rural, almost, neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Loriele. Duncan Kohler, please. Duncan?
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I'm here to raise two issues. First of all, I live downtown, across the street from the big red crane, excuse me, where they're building the Marriott project. And my main issue tonight has to do with talk around town that there's a subsidence issue over there, and that's gravely concerning to us as neighbors. We've got a huge crane right across the street that could crash in any direction, but if it did crash in our direction, it would knock out our building. It could also go towards Parkside. I know that's been in the press at least once. I think it was raised here at a different meeting, but we haven't got a lot of information since then. It seems to me that the city council ought to stay on top of what the situation is over there. And it seems reasonable that testing should be done to find out how serious the problem is. I've heard that they've been pumping concrete up underneath the foundation. But perhaps, I'm not assured that they know exactly how extensive the problem is. That needs to be stayed on top of. I attended a meeting here over a year ago about this project, and there was lots of discussion among the council members and the public, lots of comment about why weren't we given an opportunity really to weigh in on things like how it's going to affect traffic, how it's going to affect parking, how it's going to affect our quality of life here. And I remember Mr. Gookin talking about how authority had been delegated to the planning and zoning that really prevented the city council from doing anything at that point in time. In effect, it was too late. So that's all kind of water under the bridge now, but I hope that that's going to be taken up with, when Mayor Gookin takes his seat later. I hope that the city council follows up on that. My second issue, real quick, not as serious, but aggravating, has to do with the traffic light at 7th and Lakeside. So priority is definitely being given to Lakeside traffic, which is sparse compared to the north-south traffic on 7th. And we also have the post office right there, and a lot of people coming south on 7th want to go into that post office parking lot. If you get two people stopped at the light on 7th heading south, and if you're trying to get north, maybe make a left turn on Lakeside, boy, you're lucky if you can get through. So I would hope that we could take a look at that and make the traffic flow a little bit better.
Thank you, Duncan. Appreciate it. Carol Root. Carol? Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, my name is Carol Root, and I've lived in Indian Meadows for 23 years. And I recently sent you guys an email with some traffic photos that I'm hoping you had time to take a look at. But I'm concerned how connecting roads through Indian Meadows will affect traffic in our neighborhood, in Northshire, Orchardlands, Fairway Hills, and on Atlas. On 11/5, I was heading north on Atlas toward Kathleen, and I sat through seven stoplights before I was able to clear the intersection. So I went back the next week at the same time, and I took pictures on Wednesday at 3:30 PM. And there was the same issue. There was 35 cars backed up there. And to my knowledge, there are no plans to upgrade Atlas at this time, and connecting roads through Indian Meadows to Atlas is only going to add to this congestion. And there's five school bus routes that travel through Indian Meadows that make a total of 24 stops every day. These routes are four schools, and 112 children ride the buses. Most of these children walk to the bus stops. I'm concerned about their safety if the traffic is diverted through our neighborhood. The vision statement on your agenda packet states, "Our vision of CDA is of a beautiful, safe city that promotes a high quality of life through excellence in government." End of quote. Anything that compromises the quality of life in our unique neighborhood is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Envision CDA Plan Page 33 states, "CDA will strive to be one of the safest and healthiest cities in the nation. Our focus is on continually improving mental and physical health. Convenient access to trails, parks, and open spaces provides residents with the opportunity to leave active lifestyles and participate in safe, healthy social activities." Goal C12 states, "Maintain a high quality of life for residents that make Coeur d'Alene a great place to walk." Well, or to live, I'm sorry. So on my daily walks in our neighborhood, there's countless numbers of people that are walking, hiking, biking, you know, pushing their strollers. And punching connector streets through Indian Meadows completely contradicts this policy. Another point, using Nez Pierce as a connector road goes against Comprehensive Plan Goal ER3 to preserve and expand the number of street trees within city rights of ways. Action ER 3.1 states, "In new and existing developments, minimize tree removal." If Nez Pierce is used as a connecting road, there's 129 mature pine trees that might be removed. Action ER 3.2 states, "Consider a city-urban forest management policy that recognizes the value of the urban forest as a public infrastructure asset." At the last council meeting, one council member stated in part, "The long-term detrimental effects of listening to the wishes of a few and making drastic decisions." I just have a little bit more. Do you mind if I continue?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My response to that is, according to county election records, there are 1,524 registered voters in Precinct 407 and 1,357 in Precinct 406, which include residents in Indian Meadows, Northshire, Orchardlands, and Fairway Hills, which are the neighborhoods expected to see the most impact from Courteria. And keep in mind, these are only the residents that are registered to vote, so I don't deem that to be a few people. So we just ask that you please consider using industrial loop for the connector street instead of our safe rural Indian Meadows streets. And I've been canvassing the neighborhood, having people sign petition, and we have hundreds of signatures from residents in Indian Meadows, Northshire, all the neighborhoods that are supporting the use of industrial way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Pam Holcomb? Want to do it?
Hi, everybody. Hi, city council people. My name's Pam Holcomb. I've lived in Coeur d'Alene for 42 years, and I've lived on Nez Pierce for 33 years. So in response to one of the city council members' statements at the last city council meeting, respectfully, no, our realtor 33 years ago did not mention that the farm at the end of Nez Pierce would become a development and that Nez Pierce would or could become an arterial. My grandparents, my aunts and uncles were all generational farmers, and what is now Courteria could have been a generational farm forever. My understanding is that the Comprehensive Plan was changed in 2023. Courteria was zoned for R1. I'm not 100% sure if that's accurate. We could have accepted 440 more cars coming through our street, but not the 11,000 daily vehicles that are now projected. According to the 2022 Traffic Analysis Study, 85% of the vehicles were speeding on Nez Pierce. So if we become an arterial street, this would increase to 9,350 speeding cars on our rural road every day, which would be a huge safety issue for our neighborhood. So Nez Pierce was originally built in the 1970s as a rural neighborhood road. So if we have the predicted 11,000 cars per day, we would be reclassified as a minor arterial. And minor arterials are not compatible with neighborhood streets that have driveways that exit onto the arterial because it's unsafe. While Nez Pierce has 16 driveways that exit onto and off of Nez Pierce, our driveway is one of them. So we have enjoyed walking down our road after dinner to the field and the farm to watch the hundreds of geese land for the night and to watch the sunset. We've been doing that for years. Well, guess what? The geese don't live there anymore. They don't land anymore. That 440-acre farm is now Courteria. So Coeur d'Alene is growing, Courteria is happening. We get it. But I would really like to think that if I chose to live in Courteria, that I would be willing to use the existing arterials that are meant for heavy traffic. The short-term profit for the benefit of shorter travel times doesn't justify destroying our neighborhood, and it will. And the children in our neighborhoods, they can walk to the new schools, provided that we have safe, walkable pedestrian streets. So all of you and the city planners have a huge responsibility to help Coeur d'Alene grow in a way that promotes the Comprehensive Plan and doesn't tear down our existing neighborhoods. I don't envy your job. I think it's a lot of responsibility. But please consider using industrial loop as a new arterial, not Indian Meadows. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
The last time I got up here and spoke, I went home and had an anxiety attack, so it takes a lot for me to get it.
You did good. You did good. Suzanne Knudsen? Hi, Suzanne.
Hello. Tomorrow, December 3rd, 2025, communities here in Idaho, across the US, and around the world will celebrate the International Day of Persons with Disabilities, also known as IDPD, a day dedicated to recognizing the talents, contributions, and rights of people with disabilities and to reaffirming our commitment to building fully inclusive communities. Here in North Idaho, Specialized Needs Recreation, or SNR, proudly honors this day by continuing the work that we do every day all year long, creating spaces of belonging, dignity, and joy for individuals with disabilities. Through recreation programs, social events, community partnerships, and opportunities for participants to build friendships and leadership skills, SNR strives to ensure that every person, regardless of their ability, has access to meaningful connection and experiences. Today, participants played basketball on the courts at Real Life Church in Post Falls. Tomorrow, participants are going bowling at triple play, as they do every Wednesday, and alternating Fridays. A group of interns from Family Resource Training Center is coming to SNR to learn more about how SNR may be a resource for them to share with their clients. And we have a building committee meeting tomorrow morning because SNR just launched a capital campaign to build a forever home that better accommodates the needs in our community. On this important day, we invite all Idahoans to reflect on the strength and value that individuals with disabilities bring to our communities. Inclusion is not a single program or event. It is a shared responsibility and an ongoing practice. At SNR, we celebrate IDPD by continuing to champion a community where everyone is welcome, supported, and empowered. SNR was launched 42 years ago as an arm of Coeur d'Alene Parks and Rec, and Mr. Bill Greenwood has been a champion for us for these past years. Thank you, Bill. Thank you also, Councilmember Gookin, for being another one of our supporters. Thank you for joining us in recognizing December 3rd as a day of awareness, celebration, and commitment to building a more inclusive Idaho. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Appreciate that. And last but not least, John Pilsner. John, welcome.
Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your service. One of the best things you've done over the last three years is opening invocations to members of any faith or any nonprofit located within the city limits of Coeur d'Alene. You made history, and I thank you for that. Regardless of your decision tonight about invocations, there are several ways for faith leaders to participate currently, even if they're not in the city limits, throughout the county. For example, Interfaith CDA is a nonprofit in the city that is open to any faith leader of any group, anywhere in North Idaho, and they can come through that group and offer an invocation. And just for a moment, I want to say, isn't it great that so many faith leaders love our city and want to come and offer an invocation? Praying is great, and it's important, but so is action. And tonight, I want to let you know that I'm creating a nonprofit called CDA Chaplain Corps to support our city first responders. And this will also give an opportunity to faith leaders across the city and across the county to come and serve, not just pray, but also to be there when our first responders and other people in the community need them the most. I hope to meet with you about this in the near future, and why. Why do we need this? I was recently asked, what can we do to better support our first responders? And the person asking the question was referencing the terrible tragedy that took place on Canfield Mountain. We had firefighters killed, as you know. And unfortunately, as Mr. Gabriel and Mrs. Wood, you know that every day when our first responders leave their workplace in their uniform, they're putting their life on the line for each of us to keep us safe. And there's only so much that we can do as a community to support them. We can keep raising their pay, but no amount of money will ever compensate for the sacrifice that they are ultimately willing to make. So at this time, in this year, this fiscal year, where money is tight, we're drawing down reserves, it's not the best time for the city to create a new program, a new position, new paid positions. So the best thing that we can do, and I invite you to join with me in doing this, is to bring together these faith leaders who care so much about our community and to let us work with you. It will be funded by donations completely as a nonprofit, pay for uniforms, supply supplies, and we can help create a program that supports firefighters, the police. And I just think we're asking too much if, when our police officers come to a crime scene where maybe there's a murder, maybe there's somebody who died already, and it's an unaccompanied death. They don't know what happened. Maybe there's a family member that needs support. We're asking too much of our police officers to find out not only what happened in the crime, but also to support the people who are mourning and trying to figure out what happened to their loved one. So thank you so much for your service. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. All right, moving along. Announcements, counsel? Mr. Gookin?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Received an email from Ms. Root, who spoke earlier about the traffic, and Rod, who also spoke about the traffic. And I got a response from our streets engineer, and he says that the intersection is being overwhelmed because of two separate situations. First, all the ITD projects have pushed people to find a different way into Coeur d'Alene. And second, we have developed the northwest, or the north, yeah, the northwest end of town, and we are seeing more traffic. He has his team investigating it to see if there's anything they can do to make adjustments. So we are aware of the problem, and it is being worked on. Thank you for bringing it up. To Mr. Kohler, who talked about the Marriott. So I had a meeting with the Streets Department and the Building Inspector, and the developer's been very responsive, and they are addressing the situation. This is their environmental impact report. And I received a call from someone else who was also concerned. This is an inspector, and this is the engineer stamp on the inspection, saying that it has been remediated and the problem is being addressed. So hopefully that ends it, and it's been, like I say, the developer has been very responsive, and so they've addressed that situation, and it should no longer be an issue, I hope. The other thing, let me see. Okay, so the final thing is, this Friday is the last day to make public comments on the Idaho Transportation Department's desire to build a bridge over Apple Way for the 95 Exchange. So you can still go to their website, and you can still submit comments. I submitted a comment based on what's called the Environmental Justice Index, and if that sounds like a federal program, it is. The Centers for Disease Control has rated everywhere in the country as far as its economic vulnerability, and it just so happens that the area that ITD is planning on putting the overpass on Apple Way is one of the most riskiest based on social vulnerability. So I have informed them of that because there's a lot of elderly people who live there and people with disabilities. Housing cost also factors into this, lack of internet access, poverty, lots of renters. So it's all in the report that you can find on the Centers for Disease Control website. It's called the Economic Justice Index, and I have alerted the ITD to that. I don't know if they'll react about it, but it should have an impact. I'm hoping for them to reconsider what they're doing on Apple Way. That's about all we can do from the city. So that wraps it up for me, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for looking into the traffic issue on Atlas. Sitting through seven revolutions is absurd. So hopefully that gets resolved soon. I just wanted to comment on John Pulsofer's announcement, and he's left already, but I think that's a very nice, kind thing for him to do, to bring a lot of faiths together to assist police and fire. I would encourage him to work with the police chief and fire chief to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of different policies that have to be followed before you can be a police or fire chaplain. And so we need to make sure that that's done appropriately. But I think the idea is wonderful. Yes, both Kenny and I have been put in terrible situations, and it would have been nice to have had a chaplain with us from time to time. So that's it.
Sure. A little feedback. I appreciate the speakers earlier, and two of them I have intimate knowledge. The light at Seventh and Lakeside, I feel your pain. We need to adjust that. And then the, you know, Atlas and stuff, I drive that way twice a day to and from, so I'm aware of that. I'm glad to hear some of that. And I appreciate you, you know, I've been wondering about the Leaning Tower down there, so I'm glad that you did that. And, you know, mentioning Friday deadlines is that this is your opportunity. You too can take that empty seat. Friday's a deadline to put, isn't it, for applications?
Renata would know for certain.
I think so. I think you're right.
The council seat position is open until the 15th of December.
15th. Oh, you've got more time. Okay, okay. But be thinking about it. Okay, that's all. You guys got anything? All right, moving on. Look for consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented, which includes Resolution 25068.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
All right, next up, other business. Renata?
Multitask a little bit tonight, so bear with me. Sorry. I'm here to talk to you tonight about our invocation guidelines. The city of Coeur d'Alene continues the historical opportunity for folks to come forward and give our invocation at each of our meetings. I spoke with Mr. Gookin not too long ago, and we wanted to bring forward the opportunity for you guys to have a discussion on whether you want to open that up countywide. When we first initially took this over and started to do the raffle, we first talked about it being countywide, and then we had met with several of the local leaders and came back, and council had made the motion to limit it to city of Coeur d'Alene faith-based nonprofits. So we're here tonight to talk to you about whether you want to continue that or whether you want to open it up countywide. When they sign on for the raffle, or the raffle, oh my gosh, I'm just fundraising mode here. The lottery, not the raffle, either one, big wins, big wins. They do have to confirm, affirm, or swear to the things that you see up on the screen, and they do get the understanding it's just a three-minute blessing of the meeting, and all of these things are still in play. We aren't requesting any changes to that. So with that, I will stand for questions. Leave it to Mr. Gookin. Maybe you want to fill in the blanks?
Yeah, it was just, thank you, Renata. And, Mr. Mayor, I was at a meeting, it was, you know, campaigning, and I met with a ministerial association, and there were some ministers there who have, they have residents in Coeur d'Alene who attend their church, but their church is outside of the city limits, and they would like to do the invocations. In fact, I think one pastor actually lives in the city of Coeur d'Alene, but because his church is outside the city limits, he cannot do an invocation. And asked why it is, or actually asked, is it just in the city limits? And I confirmed that with Renata. And then here we are, seeing if we can open it up to perhaps countywide, still religious institutions and faith-based nonprofits. And we do have an exception already in our code for the Coeur d'Alene tribe. Thank you.
Mr. English? I would just, I support this. I think, I mean, tonight's a prime example. I mean, this is on the agenda, and we had somebody signed up, and they're not here. And nobody here. And, you know, I'm kind of the opposite of that. We live in Coeur d'Alene, you know, we've attended churches here, but our current church is out in Post Falls. You know, Post Falls isn't such a wicked city that, I mean, they shouldn't be able to come and pray. And so, yeah, I think it's great. So I will be supporting this wholeheartedly. Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At general service, we had a pretty good discussion about it. One of the questions I had for Renata was, are a lot of people asking to come in and give the invocations? The answer was no, but you only had enough people signed up for half the time. Is that correct?
Yes, we did have to do two lotteries this year because we only had 12 folks sign up the first time. So that was half the year's worth of meetings. So I had to do another one for the second half of the year.
Yeah, we very much wanted to bring it back for the whole council to discuss.
Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my thoughts are just a little bit different, and they're not wicked, I promise. But, Renata, I know that you've been tasked with this through a lot of different remuneration. And here we are where we really don't have that big of a quest to fill these slots. I think a lot of it's because it's highly unusual. I served on both the Coeur d'Alene School Board and North Idaho College Trustees, and our agenda did not contain an invocation. And so because it's a business meeting held in public, I don't think it's really on people's mindset that they need to come to the council meeting for an invocation. So I was looking for maybe a happy medium of a moment of silence so that we could honor all faiths. Certainly want to honor people and appreciate that they're willing to say a blessing for us. Again, not wicked, but I just, it seems like it's something you've continually tried to fill, and there just isn't that much interest. So those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm a little bit in line with Kristi on this one. I really like the tradition of an invocation, a moment for us to all center ourselves and get our heads around the business at hand and call upon whatever we need for strength and to get through some tough times sometimes. But I do think that even by testament of us talking about it now, it tends to be a little distracting from our agenda when we're spending this abundant amount of staff time to try to produce this invocation panel when really anyone on the council could, you know, say a prayer, or we could have a moment of silence. And I think we are getting more and more distracted with unnecessary staff time and deliberation over something that could be a lot simpler than what it needs to be. I don't see, I think churches are normally, I know that we all travel a lot more than we used to, but we have parishes, and we have wards, and we have things because people went to where their local community and their neighbors went to church. So I don't see a need to expand it outside of the city of Coeur d'Alene. I think we could handle it easily to fill in those slots and try to keep this excess burden down. That's just my thoughts on it.
That's interesting. I always thought, being here, I always thought it was part of our historical, you know, our roots in Coeur d'Alene, and I always thought it was, made me feel good. Never thought about the politics of it or who's saying it and who's doing it. I always thought it was nice when you see the guy in the collar, and then you could see a guy with a hat and all those different vibes. They were all coming to the same conclusion. They were thinking good thoughts for us and for our people. And I always thought that was kind of part of our history. It always made me feel like I'm in the right place at the right time. So again, you guys have to come up with it, you know. Renata spends a lot of time. I tried chasing when I first ended up here. I called them. I said, hey, do you not believe in doing the invocation? Or, oh, I'm too busy, or the phone numbers didn't jive. It was interesting. But a couple of them picked it up and went, oh, I forgot about that. So I guess it's how much energy, and I get what you're coming from, Kiki, how much time should staff and we put into things like that. But sometimes I don't think people really think about it until you kind of poke them. Mr. English? Well, I would just say that I would be happy to make a motion, so in the interest of time, that would allow, to support, that would allow for any nonprofit-based organization located within Cootney County to perform the invocation at a city council meeting.
I will second.
And just a follow-up comment that we, you know, we don't have, we think, enough people to fill it now, but if we expand it to the rest of the county, let's see. And then, you know, then I would say, you know, if that doesn't work, we may go to the moment of silence. I would never support just plain getting rid of it, but I think that the time to focus, but I, anyway, that's my motion. I guess we've got a second, so. Discussion. Mr. Gook?
Thank you. And I would, I would offer that when we talk about government, sometimes what we do best is what's unnecessary. So, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there to be silly. But I would say, like Woody said, it is tradition for us. And I also think there is a remarkable twist of irony in that out on social media, we are often called the most liberal extremist Marxist whatever, but we are the only government entity in the county that has an invocation.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I'll go along with council's wishes. As I said, I think that it sounds like we're going to revisit this again if it doesn't work, and we'll revisit it again if it doesn't work. And I'm just trying to be a little more efficient with saying, let's put in something that does make sense. Let's leave our invocation. But if we don't have someone sign up, we're trying to drag the horse to water here. So we can, we can, we could easily solve it with, you know, council filling in or just a moment of silence given by the mayor. So I'm not going to support it because I want to stand by my position, so.
I just had a question of clarification. The motion simply said nonprofit. It omitted the faith-based part. I don't know if that was intentional.
Not on my part. You know, I wondered while I was reading it, but I would want it to stay faith-based, for sure.
Agreed.
Motion amended.
Good with that? Amended, okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to vote against prayers. And I don't think Kiki does either. You have said you'd want to take a look at this, and I don't know, is there a timeframe? Visit in a year and see if staff hasn't constantly had to call people to come in?
Well, I would say in a year's time, yeah, bring it back, but I'm in a hole pretty firm about at least having the minute to silence to center. But a year, but I mean, you guys could pick anything else. That's not in at the timeframe, so. So do we need to clarify this, this motion? Amended with faith-based. You've been chatting over there, and I'm trying to pick up all the words.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I think we're good to go, and I will just make sure it's an agenda item in a year.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Hearing done. All those in favor of Mr. English is and Mr. Gookin second to approve guidelines which would allow for nonprofits and faith-based organizations located within Cootney County to perform the invocation at city council meetings. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Could you hold your hands? Are you keeping score? Okay. Opposed? Wow. Was that unanimous? No, abstain, abstention.
What are you voting for?
Yeah, if I vote no to stand by my position, I'll be accused of voting against prayer.
Right.
So I'm going to go along with council and be unhappy that we're going to revisit this again in a year, but that's my prerogative.
All right. Well, it looks like we're done with that. Thank you all. Let's do something fun. How about acceptance of the canvassed election results? Not sure about that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the canvassed election results from the November 4, 2025 election as presented by Cootney County, and report the results in the minutes of this meeting.
Second? Been moved and seconded. Discussion?
And, Mr. Mayor, so this is a formality after the election. It used to be that the city itself would canvass the election. Renata would have to suffer through that, but now it's the county that does it, so they just hand us the information, and we have to officially record it, which is what we're doing now.
All right. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Moving on. Sheri from CBDG Specialist, this is a public hearing, and if you're interested in talking to this, you need to sign up on the sheet back there. And this is approval of the programmatic agreement with HUD and the SPO for environmental reviews for the CBDG program. Welcome, Sheri.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to correct really fast. This is not part of the public hearing. This is an other business item. The public hearing will be next.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to discuss signing on to a programmatic agreement for historic preservation proj- for historic preservation projects through the CDBG program. So tonight, we're seeking council's approval of the Part 50 and Part 58 programmatic agreement related to Section 106 Historic Preservation Compliance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. A little history on this. The city receives funding, grant funds, from HUD through the Community Development Block Grant. And HUD also requires National Environmental Policy Act compliance for all projects that are supported with these grant funds. And an environmental review must be completed before funds may be committed or spent. The purpose of the environmental review is to protect both the natural environment and the health and safety of those assisted with the grant funds. Part of this environmental review process is to consult with the historic, the Idaho State Historic Preservation Officer. And that is called SHPO. And so a lot of projects have a minimal or no potential to adversely affect historic properties. So HUD, along with SHPO, other gov, local government entities, developed a single programmatic agreement for all HUD programs in the state of Idaho to foster consistency and efficiency for projects which have the minimal or no potential to adversely affect those properties. By approving this programmatic agreement, it'll streamline our environmental review process, which currently can take up to 30 days just for that consultation with the Historic Preservation Office. We presented this agreement to our City Historic Preservation Commission at their November meeting, and they were in support of us signing on to this agreement. And we also reached out to the Cootney County Historic Preservation Commission, the Coeur d'Alene Tribe's Preservation Officer, and the Museum of North Idaho. And we didn't receive any comments back on that with them. There's no financial impact to the city, yet this, by signing on to this agreement, staff will spend less time on the historic preservation portion of those environmental reviews. So we have a few examples of some of the projects that would be considered exempt from the consultation. Would be some of our roofing projects, exterior repairs that are of in-kind, siding, doors, stairs, undergrounding of utilities. We do some of those replacement projects in our emergency minor home repair with the sewer lateral main replacement. So those, if we sign on to this agreement, we would no longer have to do the consultation on that type of project if it fits within their criteria of the minimal ground disturbance. There's some accessibility ramps we could, could put in without consulting. And then mobile home repairs and replacement of skirting and siding and those type of projects. Signing on to this programmatic agreement doesn't remove the ability of us to consult with SHPO if we ever feel that it's necessary. And then there's always going to be projects that don't fit into the agreement's limitations. So at this time, I'm open to questions, but we'd really appreciate council's approval of us signing on to that.
Discussion, council? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Oh, I need a motion.
Would like to make a motion.
Sure.
That would approve Resolution 2506-9, approving the programmatic agreement with HUD and SHPO for environmental reviews of the CDBG program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Sounds good.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
All right, moving on. This is the public, public hearing part. Okay, thank you.
So tonight, we are bringing forward our consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for our CDBG program for our 2024 plan year. A little history on CDBG and the city. Community Development Block Grant is a grant we receive from the U.S. Housing and Urban Development Agency to support low and moderate income households through specific allowable activities. And those projects usually support housing, but they can include public facility improvements or public services. The city first became eligible to receive funds back in 2007. And since 2007, we've received a little over $5 million of grant funds. Each year, part of that grant fund requirement is that we complete a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, which highlights our accomplishments which took place during the plan year. So for this CAPER, we call it, it is the 2024 Plan Year, which covers October 1st of 2024 through September 30th of 2025. Part of our requirements is heavy citizen participation through our grant program. And we reached out to our community in various ways, inviting them to review our CAPER, make comments, attend our public hearing tonight. And these are some of the ways that we reached out. We posted the CAPER on our website. We posted, or published a legal notice in the Coeur d'Alene Press. We did a press release, posted on the city's Facebook page. Our CD TV, CDA TV ran the information on their broadcast. We direct emailed 190-plus stakeholders. And what I don't have on here is we also put an article in our municipal milestones newsletter. And then we're concluding this opportunity with tonight's public hearing. We also provided some free fair housing training back in April, which we partnered with the Inner Mountain Housing Council. They presented that for us. That was free to anyone who wanted to attend. Our guiding consolidated five-year plan goals are to maintain and increase housing stock, public facility and infrastructure projects, public services, homelessness assistance, and economic development. And in our plan year 2024, we met four of those goals. The maintain and increase housing stock, public facilities, public services, homelessness assistance. The only goal we did not meet was the economic development, and that was as no projects were funded during Plan Year 2024. This is a recap of our budget for the year. We received an allocation of $296,418. That supported Lake City Center's Home Delivered Meals Grant with $10,000. We also funded the Emergency Minor Home Repair and Accessibility Improvement Program with $141,491. There's a little note on there. We completed eight home rehab projects, and that accounted for, excuse me, projects that were initiated and funded with only Plan Year 24. So I'm going to expand on MRAP a couple slides down because we completed many more projects than that. We also funded some community opportunity grants. We funded two public facility grants and one public service grant. TESH received some funds in Plan Year 24 to go towards their IT server upgrade, AC replacement, and irrigation cap projects. Safe Passage received some funding to remodel the kitchen and replace the roof on their safe house. And then United Way North Idaho received some public service grant monies for their childcare scholarship program. And then lastly, in our budget, we allocated $59,283 to administration, and we did spend that money. Again, Lake City Center received $10,000 of grant funds for their Home Delivered Meals Program, and they assisted over 350 Coeur d'Alene residents. And that was just in one month. So we're excited to see what they do this year with the increased funding. And also of note, they are now a member of the Meals on Wheels of America organization. So it'll have a little, little bit different branding now. Some of our additional successes during the plan year. TESH completed their IT server upgrade and HVAC projects using Plan Year 22 funding. Also, Safe Passage installed a radon mitigation system at their safe house. They completed that kitchen remodel and roof replacement project using some Plan Year 24 funding. St. Vincent de Paul also installed a radon mitigation system at the help center. And then a broader overview for our MRAP projects. We completed 16 of those home rehab projects, which utilized Plan Year 24 along with Plan Year 23 funds. We spent down $49,423 in our MRAP activity delivery costs. That's for the management of the MRAP projects. Our general administration costs again. And then Safe Passage completed that kitchen remodel and roof replacement, which included some emergency housing while the kitchen was demoed. And those funds were from Plan Year 23, but they completed the project in the Plan Year 24. We also partnered with the Streets Department and completed some improvements on 21st Street and the sidewalk accessibility project. Those funds were from Plan Year 2018 through 2022. Overall, our grant program expended $388,363 in the plan year. So we had lots of projects and really got a lot done. So lots of successes in the program. These are the 16 Emergency Minor Home Repair and Accessibility Improvement Program projects that we completed during the plan year. They just were a lot of various things that we were able to assist homeowners with. Here's a few pictures of some of the projects. Rebuilt accessible ramp to a front entrance. There was a, one of the homeowners had a leak in their kitchen that destroyed some subfloor. So we were able to assist them with replacing that subfloor and then getting some new vinyl plank flooring put down. There's a picture of one of the re-roofs. This is a before and after of that accessible ramp that was installed. The contractor did a really nice job with that. And then we were also able to partner with the Streets Department again on a small project to replace a sidewalk where they had already had part of that project in their list of areas that they were going to improve at the corner. But we were able to use some of our CDBG funds through the MRAP project to replace another strip of the sidewalk where it had buckled from the tree. So with that, the next thing would be to take public comments for the hearing and for our CAPER. And then we would appreciate approval of us submitting it to HUD for review and hopefully approval.
I have some questions for you, council. Go.
Well, just the one goal that hadn't mentioned, I mean, hadn't met was economic development. But did we have any applications under that category?
We received one out of the nine, but it just, our ad hoc committee didn't feel that. It rose to the, the priority level of some of the other projects that they suggested.
Okay, well, appreciate that, yeah, they put it in there. So, okay, thanks.
Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sherry, how do citizens determine their eligibility? Is it the website, the city website?
We have information on the website. Generally, I get phone calls and I can share with them. HUD has an income documentation limits that they publish each year. That's also on our website, but that's what we go from, go off of. And, and it's on our MRAP application as well.
Great, thank you.
Dan stole my question, so thank you. But Sherry, thank you so much. You'll probably get tired of me thanking you for the great job that you do. This is one of those great, is what he would say, feel-good programs that we do in the city. And you do a masterful job at managing it, so well done, thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. We'll take on our input from some folks. Have some folks signed up here to kind of give us an attaboy, I hope. Rebecca Platt. Rebecca, are you here?
You should, Mr. Mayor, you should open the public hearing.
Oh, I have to open it? Oh, I need to open the public hearing? Thank you. Welcome, Rebecca.
Sorry, my handwriting's really bad. It's Rebecca Pratt, not Platt, sorry. So I am here with United Way of North Idaho, which, as Sherry mentioned, we had our CDBG funds fund our childcare scholarships. You'll hear after me from Rachel Peterson, more about numbers and the lives that we impacted. But I just wanted to share a little bit about how people are selected and qualify for our childcare scholarships. So we have what's called the NIELC Scholarship Committee. That stands for North Idaho Early Learning Collaborative. They have multiple members from around Region 1 North Idaho who have a seasoned experience in early childhood education, family support, and community resources for Alice families. We use this team as a monthly to sort through multiple scholarship applications and supply them resources outside of only the scholarship funds. Even if the applicant, even if the applicant is not found eligible for the scholarship fund, we still use the information that they have provided for us to cultivate a list of resources curated to what they're struggling with at that moment. We get anything from people with medical issues, people escaping domestic violence, people having a spouse lost their job or suffering injury and unable to work. And that's why they name these emergency funds. People who qualify for this do not qualify for ICCP because they make too much. So this is your neighbor, this is people that you know, these are not people, you know, that it's hard to imagine. These are people you run into every single day on the street. Families give a brief overview of their expenses, housing, childcare, medical, et cetera. And we have a full view of their situation. We use this to surmise their needs and best provide additional resources. Recently, the committee has adopted a final step for families who are awarded to accept their scholarships. Families who are awarded are now required to complete an entirely self-paced parenting course that covers many topics such as self-sleep, cry plans, nutrition, and other topics to ensure safety while parenting your child. We are very excited to continue this impactful work supporting Alice in the Coeur d'Alene area. I myself am from here, went to high school here and college. So to be able to help the people who are living here now is a huge opportunity that I love every single day. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Marcy Hartzwell. Welcome, Marcy.
I have really poor handwriting as well. Marcy Hartzell. I've been here before. I want to say thank you for letting me return. I'm the CEO of TESH. We're an organization in town that serves youth and adults with intellectual disabilities. My COO is back there, Ramona Morris. She handles and manages most of the projects that we've received through the CBDG funds. Over the years, we have received close to $200,000 in funds through CBD projects, and it's vital for our organization. We are essentially what you call a pass-through organization or a fee-for-service organization. So we provide a service to people with intellectual disabilities. Those services are provided, and then we ask for reimbursement from the state through Medicaid funds. All of our clients receive Medicaid. They all are within the Alice population, not to mention probably 90% of my staff. So I want to say thank you to United Way because we had a staff person that received those childcare funds through that grant, through CBDG funds. And without that, she would not be able to support childcare for her two children because I can't afford to pay her enough. So I just want to say thank you. The most recent project, it, it has gone back through the years. Like I said, $200,000 in funding through CBDG funds. We've done upgrades on HVAC system, duct. We've done upgrades on HVAC system, ducting, insulation, six bathroom upgrades at our facility to make them ADA compliant. And most recently, newer HVAC system, IT server, and an irrigation project, which Sherry did not mention, we are just tying the bow on that project. That alone will save our organization about fourteen thousand dollars a summer, which is a salary, which is support for the clients that we serve. We would not be able to function and serve a two-acre lot and a twenty-four thousand square foot building without funds from the city. It does our upgrades. It supports our upgrades to a thirty-year building, which is vital for the three-hundred-plus people that come into our facility every single year. We, our purpose is to transform lives, and that is different for each individual. And sometimes they may be there for thirty years, transforming their life one step at a time. And sometimes they may be in our facility for three months. But the support that we provide to them through the support that you give us is extremely vital to our community, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Next up, Rachel Peterson. I'm going to give you guys pencils next time to sign up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members. Yes, I think we thought Rebecca signed the "We're not speaking," so I appreciated her coming up. She did a great job explaining our vetting process. So I think you're all familiar with United Way, an organization that's been in the community almost seventy years, looking at the most pressing needs in the community through convening and appreciate so much your support through this block grant. In two thousand twenty-four, the City of Coeur d'Alene awarded our organization through this grant funds that we have been able to use to expand our availability to access affordable childcare for Alice families and households that are asset limited, income constrained, and employed. These funds have played a critical role in helping working families maintain stability by ensuring their children remain in safe, high-quality, early-learning environments, also contributing to our economic infrastructure by supporting local businesses. Some of our outcomes just from this one year of grant funding include thirty-two families supported that were able to receive scholarships after that vetting process. They were also matched with other opportunities in the community to receive support and help for even greater lift than just the scholarship alone. That includes ninety-seven total months of quality childcare funded across licensed early learning collaborative providers. That represents nineteen childcare facilities that provide quality childcare in our community. Those are small businesses that are able to stay in business because they're receiving this ongoing support and business. Our families were able to maintain employment, stabilize household budgets, and keep children enrolled in consistent supportive childcare settings. So thank you for that. In testimony, one of our parents said, "My son was able to stay in a good school. I was able to work as much as I needed to to support this family." Before, I was on the edge of losing my job due to childcare costs. I didn't receive very much money, but the recipient here is just very grateful. I'm glad I got what I received. This was an amazing program that helped me keep working. Another scholarship recipient said, "The scholarship has been a blessing. I've been able to keep my child in the same preschool and have been able to go to work without worrying about her well-being there. I'm able to reallocate money that I was spending on childcare so that I have enough money to feed my two children." So thank you for supporting these efforts this last year. It's made a big difference in our community. Our early learning collaborative committees that do the vetting are very careful to make sure that we make the most of this funding, that it goes to the families that most need it, but also that we provide wraparound and other support by partnering with other community organizations, nonprofit, and otherwise that can help these families for a longer lift, not just a handout. So thank you again. And in summary, thank you to the City of Coeur d'Alene for this funding. United Way of North Idaho provided essential childcare support to working families who often fall through the gaps of traditional assistance. This investment strengthened family stability, supported workforce participation, and ensured children could remain in nurturing, high-quality learning environments. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, Rachel. Those are good stories. Next up, Patty Wheeler. Patty, how are you?
Hello, Mayor, Council. I am Patty Wheeler with Safe Passage. I'm here to thank you and Sherry and the City of Coeur d'Alene for helping with upgrading the domestic violence shelter that serves all of North Idaho, but mainly the City of Coeur d'Alene. The kitchen, our services are provided for those that are fleeing. So those are the ones that are in imminent danger. Law enforcement has been involved. We need to get them to a safe place. So that's the focus of this shelter. It's a community shelter for people and their children. So there's shared kitchens and things like that that's in this house. We have been living with a leaky roof. It had spread from the porch area into one of the rooms and also a very dysfunctional kitchen to where only one person could really cook at a time. And with this funding, we were able to expand this. First of all, put a nice dry roof on, so we're not leaking anymore. It's very nice to see that this winter. But we also have a kitchen that is functional. So there's two ovens, so more than one family could cook at a time, prepare meals together, but also separately. And it looks great. So when they walk in, they know they're in a really good place. So thank you to the city and to Sherry and the CDBG funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. David Klow. David, doesn't show if he wants to speak or not. Kevin Turri. Kevin? Does anybody else want to address this? Is that you, Kevin?
Yes.
Oh, welcome, sorry.
Mayor, City Council? I, I'm not really prepared, but as long as my name was called. I have a couple of questions about the temple structure going up.
This is a public hearing in regards to the HUD.
My first hearing, so I apologize.
You're welcome. It's coming down the pike here.
All right, so, sorry.
Bear with us, no problem. I'm going to take you off the list here, Kev. Okay. Anybody else want to talk? Nancy, you want to say a few words? I'll put you on the list.
Want to put me on the list?
You're on.
Evening, Mayor, Council. In case you don't know who I am, Nancy Phillips, I'm the Executive Director at Lake City Center. We provide home-delivered meals, now known as Meals on Wheels, to Coeur d'Alene here. Last year, we provided a little bit over three-hundred-and-fifty meals. In case you don't know what those folks are, they're over the age of sixty, homebound, and they can't make meals independently. So they need help with their food. A lot of them are alone, a lot of them are widowers. Every now and then, you'll get a couple that are homebound together, but they cannot go out otherwise to get their meals. And not only do we provide the meals, but the drivers that they see on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, sometimes it's the only human connection that they'll have that week. And that alone is probably just as important as food. So with your help, ten thousand dollars last year, we were able to make sure that we were able to buy food. And it costs a lot. Food is pretty expensive. Ten thousand covers about a month of food for three-hundred-and-fifty people. So the increase this coming year is greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. We'll continue to work and make sure that our seniors are taken care of and not forgotten. Thanks.
Thank you, Nancy. All right, I'm going to close. Close the public testimony and look to council. Any questions, comments? Mr. Gookin?
It's a good program.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I move to approve the Community Development Block Grant 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Second.
Second at discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you for counsel. Thank you all. Moving on, quasi-judicial hearing. This has got some other rules. This is from Sean Holmes, our planner. And I have to read this, Sean, so take a break. Go have a cup of coffee or something.
It's a whole paragraph.
Please note, the term deliberation in the Idaho opening, open meeting law includes a receipt or an exchange of information in any form, including emails, telephone calls, and in-person conversations. In addition, when council sits in a quasi-judicial capacity, its decision can only be based on information presented at the hearing. Therefore, I ask if any council member has received or exchanged information related to the annexation request that is not included in the council packet, please disclose that information now so that the appellant and the public have full knowledge of the information you possess. Sean, thanks for, coffee was good?
All right. Yes, it was. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Luck, City Council. So tonight, before you, you have an application for Annexation A125. This is a request for R3 zoning in conjunction with annexation in, as well as a hillside. The applicant is here tonight. Eugene P. Haig, Jr. Trust, along with his representation engineer, Olson Engineer. So the location is 2248 East Stanley Road. This is on the east side of town. And legal notice was published. It was also posted and mailed to adjacent property owners within three-hundred feet. So the applicant is requesting approval of this annexation. The size of the property is three-point-one-nine acres. As I said, it's currently county ag suburban. The request is for R3, which is residential at three units per gross acre, as well as a hillside overlay due to the slope of the property. Move into some background information. So first up, this is a larger context of the city. This denotes where the subject property is on the east side of Coeur d'Alene. Zoomed in from an aerial photograph, this is the three-point-one-nine acres highlighted in red. It is currently served off of East Stanley Hill Road. And this is Eugene's home on the north end. This is a bird's eye photo, gives a little bit more of a 3D context. You can see some of the slope and the treat area that is current, that currently exists. The existing zoning map, so it is currently county ag suburban, and if approved, would become R3 hillside, which is similar to the other properties that are nearby in city limits. This is the annexation map that was provided with the application, showing where existing city limits is and the subject property. Okay. Second here. So at the hearing for planning and zoning, which the words on the screen, you can read yourself, they approved the subdivision along with this request, which allowed creation of five single-family lots, one pre-existing home, and four new hillside lots, and to construct and connect East Lily Drive as a city right-of-way that would connect the east segment of Lily Drive under, or as part of that subdivision request, which was S125. The subdivision approval is contingent upon City Council approval of the annexation request this evening. This is a copy of that subdivision plat. To the north here, this is Eugene's home. To the south are three lots to the north of what would be constructed to connect Lily Drive through and one additional home to the south of that. If you remember, I'm going to turn my screen a little bit so I can see. There was some, there was a previous hearing, a couple of them actually. A little bit of history here. Give me a second. So this is the third annexation request. Previous requests were in two thousand and five, that was A705, and in 2021, which also included a PUD and a subdivision. This most recent annexation request went before City Council on the, on 2021 in July. And the request included all of those items. Following public testimony, council had a split vote, and the final decision to deny without prejudice was made by the mayor. Factors in the decision were comprehensive plan, which is now replaced by the new comprehensive plan, 2022, community needs, stormwater drainage issues, and onsite spring and traffic concerns. Although the public facilities were adequate, the council denied the request without prejudice by a four-to-three vote. So the applicant has addressed the stormwater onsite, spring, and spring concerns with the current request. The associated subdivision request does not include a PUD this time. It does connect through. A lot of that was based upon the feedback that they received from council that there wasn't any, that there was not enough public benefit. Okay, so as part of that request, or the previous denial, there was some misunderstanding, I believe, of what would be allowed and what the impacts were. So with the PUD, it required ten percent open space and some other things like that. With this, there is not that. The applicant has paid for and provided a geotech report, as well as provided the slopes of the property here so that you can see what the disturbed slope is, knowing upfront that it would comply with hillside code, at least for disturbance. And that's what this graph grading table provides here. The top lot, which is the existing home, is under fifteen percent slope, and thus it's exempt from hillside requirements. And then what those other four lots are. As part of that hillside code, twenty-five percent is automatically not allowed to be disturbed, plus the average slope of the lot. That gives you what the percentage of the lot that must remain undisturbed is. And that's what is provided. So hopefully that helps clear up any prior issues there. So the R3 zoning district does have a minimum lot standard of eleven-thousand-five-hundred square feet. All of the proposed lots meet that minimum, with the largest being a little over sixty-thousand square feet. They also require seventy-five feet of frontage along a public street, which is why the PUD, part of the PUD last time that was denied, it did not have a public street through there, so they weren't able to get that frontage. And they tried to do it with two dead ends and a cul-de-sac. It ended up being denied. So all the setbacks and hillside codes must be met. And review of these items takes place at the time of building permit. Now we'll move on to the actual portion of the hearing where findings need to be made. There are four findings that need to be made for annexation. They are here on the screen. We'll go through each one of these. First is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. Subject property is contiguous with city limits, so it meets the state code. And it falls within the single-family neighborhood place type. This is zoomed in, so the previous one was city context. Give me a second here to catch up. So place types represent the form of future development as envisioned by the residents of Coeur d'Alene. Each place type corresponds to multiple zoning districts that will provide high level of detail and regulatory guidance on items such as height, lot size, setbacks, adjacencies, and allowed uses. Single-family neighborhoods are places where, that are lower density. Housing areas across Coeur d'Alene, where most of the city's residents live, primarily in single-family homes on larger lots. Supporting uses include neighborhood parks and recreation facilities connected by trails. Compatible zoning is R1. R stands for residential at one unit per gross acre. R3, which is the request. R5, R8, and MH8, which is mobile home at eight units per gross acre. So continuing with finding B1, this is the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan. The existing and planned bicycle network, as you can see out in these areas where there is, there's hillsides and things of that nature, there, they, those items are not really provided in either of these for plan- in either of these for planned walking network, existing transit network, as well as the bicycle network, although this request would be required to put in a sidewalk on the north-hand side. Last but not least, these are the goals and the objectives of the comprehensive plan. Always like to mention community and identity, CI1, which is having people show up and express their concerns, to show their support, et cetera. Environment and recreation. Goal ER3 is protect and improve the urban forest while maintaining defensible spaces that reduce the potential for forest fire. And then the objectives 1 through 4 that support that goal. Growth and development. To develop a mix of land uses throughout the city that balance housing and employment while preserving the qualities that make Coeur d'Alene a great place to live. And then the objective, as well as goal GD2, which is ensure appropriate, high-quality infrastructure to accommodate community needs and future growth, as well as the objective. Last but not least, health and safety. HS3, continue to provide exceptional police, fire, and emergency services. Okay, so finding B2. That public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. So on pages 16 and 17 of your report, it does provide the feedback from our departments, stormwater streets, water, and sewer and fire, I believe, as well as police. They've all said that those are available. I do want to bring up this piece. This is new to this particular hearing. The last two times, staff did not have a copy of this. It was provided in your staff report, is concerning water. So Future Lilly Drive here, that's pointed out. That was always anticipated. That was based upon the, I forgot the name of the subdivision. Ponderosa Terrace. So Ponderosa Terrace is on the other side of Future Lilly Drive. They were required in 1979 to sign an agreement saying that they would waive their fight to an annexation in the future. That would last for 25 years unless it was changed. And as we understand it, the Water Department has never had anyone approach them to change that. So these, all of these properties out here to the north, and also to the south, east of the subject property, are all currently on city water and not in city limits, as well as the subject property, which comes in off the north-hand side. This is Mr. Hague's property right here, his house. So that was meant to be connected. Alrighty. So the site does slope to the south. It drops approximately 120 foot over that elevation. And the site is currently densely treed. Subject property would be annexed into the city with the hillside regulations. I did provide a number of those. Told you, some of it, additional items. We take a look and control the color of the house so we don't get really bright colored homes on hillsides that people have to look at, try and get it to blend in. Still provides a lot of different colors to choose from. I see Dan smiling over there about that one. So it does, it does provide for all colors of the rainbow, just not the most brightest ones. All right. Also, trees, significant trees must be retained in the areas that are undisturbed. Best management practices to prevent runoff, and the limitation of how much you can disturb. So this is what it looks like as far as the hillside goes. This is an elevation map. And as you can see, the property is in city limits right now. Thing to show up. This is city limits where the kind of light green, yellowish color is. The closer that these white lines get together, the steeper the property is. You can see this is the subject property denoted in red. And then in the county on the other side, the Ponderosa neighborhood. Moving on into the views, the pictures. So this is a picture of the subject property in the northwest corner, looking at the subject, into the subject property at the existing home. This is on the south end, the southeast side, or southwest side looking east into the subject property. It actually begins where the asphalt ends, but it does block public access, at least through, with vehicles at this point. All right, so this is the terminus of East Lilly Drive at the western edge of the property. And then from the east side looking west. And this is the property that is in the county that is served by city water. This is interior to the site, looking up at the slope towards Mr. Hague's home. And then this was a subject, if you, and those of you that have done your homework, when Planning Commission reviewed this, there was a condition by the planning department to have the cistern taken care of and removed and remediated. There were some issues with what was considered or could have been groundwater, or a spring, or something of that nature. This is what that was. This has been removed and remediated. So that, that condition for planning has been removed between Planning Commission and tonight. Alrighty, so moving on for traffic. This tends to be one of the items that comes up quite often in our hearings. Chris Bosley is here tonight. City engineer stated that the subject property is boarded by, primarily by Lilly Drive, where future construction is anticipated, which is a local residential street. Traffic from this proposed development is estimated to provide a very minimal increase in peak hour trips to Lilly Drive, and may improve traffic circulation for nearby residents. However, residents along the existing Lilly Drive dead end will undoubtedly experience an increase in traffic. The streets and engineering department has no objection to the annexation and subdivision as proposed. So that's concerning the traffic. As far as neighborhood character goes, I won't read this one into the record. I will just state that overall, the neighborhood's character is defined by single-family homes in a hillside setting, balancing urban accessibility with natural preservation. Annexation with R3 zoning would extend this pattern eastward, promoting infill development and projects against incompatible rural sprawl, while addressing past concerns about topography and drainage. So this is a land use map. You can see here largely, most of the properties around this area are single-family. As you move towards town, on some of the flatter areas, you do run into a few duplexes and a couple of vacant properties that are in city limits. So there are some proposed conditions. There are six of them in total. Fire department, water line connecting both sides of East Lilly must be connected. Slope of the connection must not, must not exceed 8% grade, and also support their apparatus, which is 75,000 pounds. And any water main extensions or fire hydrants and services must be the responsibility of the developer at their expense. And those cap fees will be due at the time of permitting. A main extension will be required to serve the subdivision and tied into the existing main of both ends of the water. For Lilly Drive must be tied together. Then two for wastewater is to extend to and through. And the existing home on the parcel must connect to city sewer and pay it the appropriate cap fees. There are some additional comments by staff. If anybody would like to hear them, I am happy to read them into the record. But with that, I'll close. I'll close with, the city council must review the annexation request and the associated zoning proposal, and make findings to either approve, deny, or deny without prejudice. Any of the conditions that you would pass along with this would be included in the annexation agreement? And I'll stand for questions.
Questions, counsel? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. Thank you, Sean.
Mr. Gookin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Sean, I have some questions regarding that, regarding that agreement. So the agreement states in your staff report, Lilly Drive would connect through to the east, as was intended per the Ponderosa Terrace plat for the lots located in the unincorporated county on Lilly Drive east of the subject property. That's mentioned on page 2. And then on page 17, it said, it should be noted that the lots in Ponderosa Terrace to the east on Lilly Drive are located in the unincorporated county but are on city water. Immediately after the subdivision was platted in the county in 1978, they requested city water service in 1979. As part of receiving city water, they signed annexation waivers and have restricted covenants in place. And on the next page, it says, attached are two documents, restrictive covenants and a work order for Ponderosa Terrace. The first describes the limitations for the property outside the city limits that were required as a condition to be served by city water. Of note, number eight says, the owners would not oppose a lawful annexation request. The restrictive covenant runs for 25 years and contains, and continues unless a majority of the owners agree to change the agreement. The Water Department stated these documents, that they all have on record. And then you did include the restrictive, the actual agreement here, number eight. At such time that City Coeur d'Alene, in the future, proceeds under law to annex any or all of the property within this plat to the city of Coeur d'Alene. The owners of said property shall not oppose the annexation to the city of Coeur d'Alene, and shall operate in the fullest extent with the city in the annexation of such property. But the last paragraph says that these restrictions shall remain in full force and effect for a period of 25 years from the date hereof, and then until such time as the majority of the owners of all, in the said subdivision desire, agree to change the terms. So my question for you, and perhaps Mr. Adams as well, is, it says 25 years, and that expired. I did the math somewhere. That expired at some point in the past, 2003. But does the language here say that it just continues until they agree that it, that it ends? So it's basically eternal?
Well, that's how it reads. It reads that there can be no changes in it for the first 25 years. After the first, after that, then they all have to agree to remove the restrictions. So they do continue until the homeowners or the property owners complete that restriction, or agree to change the restrictions in whole or part.
And so if I'm reading this right, and you can correct me, it means that they cannot object to this annexation under any circumstances?
It does say that they will not oppose annexation, yes.
And to our knowledge, have they met to repeal this covenant?
I have not seen anything.
Okay.
Water Department said they have nothing on record.
Okay. So what happens tonight when one of those residents decides to oppose the annexation?
And we wouldn't take away their First Amendment right. We just wanted to point out what the agreement said.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Kristi.
Thank you. Reading through the Planning and Zoning Commission comments, there was a question by Commissioner Ingles that you responded that that would, or maybe it was Hillary, that that would be up for the council to discuss and decide with the annexation. So, well, here we are. So maybe a little more information. There was a question about if East Side Highway District has been contacted, and what would be the grade of the road? The portion of the road to the west has been abandoned. Who would repair it and bring that up to city standard? And that's when Hillary stated that the annex, for the annexation request for the evening, the commissioner's only role is to make a recommendation if the zoning is appropriate. The city council will determine if the annexation's appropriate. So do you have any further answer on the, who would maintain the road? Who would repair it?
At that hearing, Chris did provide some additional information. He is here tonight. I would like our city engineer to speak to that.
Great.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. We did meet with East Side Highway District. And we had a site visit out there to look at the property. And some of the concerns that were brought up by property owners in one of the previous public hearings, there was some talk about making some vision triangle improvements at Lilly and Hill Drive. Ben Waymoth from East Side Highway District had some requests to keep drainage moving from the east side of the property to the west, because there's a little bit of ponding that goes on there right now. Those are easily accomplished. As far as maintenance goes, plowing, patching, and things like that, we would likely plow this portion out to Hill Drive. We don't have any formal agreements with East Side Highway District at this time. It's always been a handshake deal as to who plows what, who stripes what, and things like that. We partner on a lot of things, but they are looking at formalizing this a little bit more, so there is no disagreement over it. But it just makes sense that if we're doing the rest of Lilly Drive, that we would pick up these next nine homes or whatever on the east side of this property as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Kenny.
Chris, while I have you.
Yes.
And Sean, I heard you say that Lilly Drive was always in the plans for it to be expanded. Is that correct?
Yes, Chris also mentioned that. Sorry, I'm not next to the microphone. But it is named the same thing on both sides.
Okay, good. And then tell me in a minimum, you said a minimum amount going through, you know, traffic at peak hours. I'm not looking for an answer on that.
Oh, oh, well, typically, you can figure about 10 or 11 trips per day per household for a single-family household. And there are four houses being developed there. So the impact of those four houses isn't substantial. Connecting the two ends is going to be a bigger impact because some people will drive through. Maybe it'll be a convenience for some people, but inconvenience for others.
I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks, you guys. Appreciate it. Next up is the applicant.
Thank you, Chris.
Greetings, welcome. You have 10 minutes.
Woody also need to swear him in.
Oh, that's right. Love to swear you into.
I, can you raise your right hand and swear or affirm to the following? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I swear.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. I wasn't aware I had a time limit. I will try to go fast. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor-elect, counsel.
No, he doesn't have a time limit on this.
He doesn't.
Is there a time limit on the applicant?
I'm just reading the form.
Generally, for the applicant, there is no time limit.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm still gonna try to respect him. Okay, you saw the map earlier. Why are we here again? This is the third, third try. We didn't get it in 21. The owner, Mr. Hague, still wishes, he's always wished to annex this property and subdivide it for the benefit of his family. There have been changes since 2021. We have additional information to present, and information about what we feel are significant benefits to the city of Coeur d'Alene. I, being the applicant, feel strongly that this is a logical annexation. It's easy for me to present. Why the public road option again? As Sean mentioned, the 2021 PUD version failed narrowly because it didn't offer enough benefit to the city. So here we are with the public road option. As Sean mentioned, Lilly Drive was meant to be completed. You can kind of tell if this isn't enough information for you that we've got two dead-end streets meeting at Mr. Hague's property. You can see this excerpt from the plat. Let's see, is this, yeah, okay, good. So first of all, if it wasn't meant to extend, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a curve here. And there wouldn't be a temporary easement that says to be vacated upon extension of the roads. To me, that's very clear. This was, this Lilly Drive was meant to be completed. Benefits of completing Lilly Drive. I'm just gonna read a portion of Craig Atherton's from the Fire Department. The proposed road connection along Lilly Street enhances Fire Department response times to areas beyond city limits. Additionally, it provides access to a second fire hydrant located along Lilly Street, improving fire protection coverage. The completion of Lilly Street provides faster The completion of Lilly Street provides faster emergency services to Hill Street and Galena Avenue and further optimizes access and response capabilities in the surrounding area." I'm gonna add to that, that presently, there is no turnaround at the end of Lilly Drive on the county, on the county side. And there's no way out for those folks if Lilly Drive were to be blocked. So this is gonna provide them a second, a second way to get out of the neighborhood should there be an emergency event. Water Department, the one I've highlighted here, says, "A main extension will be required to serve this subdivision and be tied into the existing main on East Lilly Drive. Both ends of the water main on Lilly Drive must be tied together. This project is gonna connect two dead-end water lines, providing increased water circulation, flow capacity, and pressure during high-use periods." Traffic circulation, yes. There's gonna be a little bit more traffic on Lilly Drive. I would just point out, that's what, that's the way it was meant to be. And if there's more traffic on Lilly Drive, that means there's gonna be less traffic on some of your other streets. Stanley Hill Road being a good example. So I would make the point that it's going to spread out traffic more evenly in this area, as well as provide additional connections, additional redundant connections for construction, road closures, and emergencies. Let's see. So also, it's gonna, it's gonna speed up trips for some of those folks, too. We're gonna save a little bit of time and a little bit of money. Primary beneficiary there is, are the folks just immediately to the east, but there's some of that neighborhood east of Hill Drive that also benefits a little bit as well. Another benefit of completing Lilly Drive, these are, the photo on the left side, this is a beaten path that's been worn through Mr. Hague's property. It's, it's used frequently. He's had no trespassing signs put up, and they've been taken down, and people basically see it as an open walking connection, among other things. They've actually put up signs, which, that's a nice gesture, right? Clean up after your dog. But it doesn't take away from the fact that they're trespassing. And if, if they're using it, it's gonna be a useful sidewalk connection, right? So I'm gonna go into, Shaun covered, covered these. I've got a few of my own points to make here. These are the required findings for annexation. There are four of them. B1, that this proposal is conformance with comp plan policies. So the ones we've selected here, CI3, Court Lane will strive to be livable for medium and below income levels, including young families, working class, low-income, and fixed-income households. The additional lots, in this case, Gene's plan is to allow, to give them to his children so that they can become property owners. And he's gonna come up for a minute after I'm done and elaborate a little bit. GD3, support the development of a multimodal transportation system for all users. This annexation and subdivision would complete Lilly Drive and make it legal for pedestrians to walk through. Also improve vehicle circulation in the area. GD5, implement principles of environmental design and planning projects. I think the point I'm trying to make here is, we're not doing the PUD this time. That would have involved a little bit more work to create usable open space. This is just a cleaner way to do that. We're not doing anything just for the sake of meeting a code regulation. HS3, continue to provide exceptional police, fire, and emergency services. The completion of Lilly Drive, elimination of dead ends, and additional looping of the water system will enhance emergency access and the ability to fight fires in the area. B2, public facilities and utilities are available and adequate for the proposed use. As Shaun mentioned, they are. B3, physical characteristics of the site make it suitable for the request. Shaun went through the table. Basically, what I'd point out is, these are kind of some generic house footprints that we've put on here and graded to see how much of the site's gonna be impacted. If you compare the, column three, where it goes 50% to 45, to column four, where it goes 54 to 58, there's still a little bit of room to work in there, too. Basically, column three can't exceed column four, so somebody could go a little bigger and still be in the hillside, meeting the hillside ordinance. This is just a couple of snapshots from the geotechnical evaluation that was done by Geotech out of Hayden, and some highlights out of that. Groundwater was not encountered in any of their test holes. On the right side there, it shows there were, it looks like there were nine test holes taken throughout the portion to be developed. Groundwater may yet be encountered during construction. If it is, capture and divert. Surface water was found discharging from a pipe from neighboring property. Based on, and this is a quote out of their report, "Based on our observations and the information provided by the civil engineer," that's me, "it does not appear that the free-flowing surface water represents a naturally occurring stream or spring. And further, the existing drainage pipe discharge should be evaluated by the civil engineer to redirect this discharge to an appropriate receiving location. I'm confident that I can handle that in final design." Third finding for annexation, we're still on physical characteristics. So this is just a summary. The 8% street grade is acceptable to city staff. We can build homes and still meet the hillside ordinance. Spring does not exist. Any surface and groundwater can be captured and diverted. Adjacent areas with similar slopes, and I'd say similar issues with groundwater that whole hillsides that way, have been successfully developed. B4, that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. Character and land use will remain similar with the addition of four new single-family lots of similar size to the surrounding area, which is all R3 zoning in the city. And legal, legal walking connection will enhance connectivity between neighborhoods. I don't think, we're not talking about subdivision here, that's, so I don't need to go through This is my last slide. Summary of benefits, better fire protection, better water circulation, better traffic circulation, a new sidewalk connection, no construction costs to the city, increased tax base. City's gonna control development through the hillside ordinance versus potentially developing in the county, which admittedly would be difficult. And we're creating housing opportunities for, for new families. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Gene to come up and speak for just a minute. But I guess before you get up, are there any questions for me?
Thank you.
I just have one. I've noted three different times we're talking about this water situation, and so there seems like there was a lot of misinformation because there's water from a cistern that has now been remediated.
Correct.
And there's water from a neighbor's property that isn't a surface water.
There is as well. There's a drainage pipe coming from it. And truthfully, I would not have chosen to dwell on the issue. I just know that it has, it has come up, it came up in the last hearing, and so I wanted to let you guys know that we were serious about looking at it and addressing it.
Good. And then the other thing about this drainage issue, you said you can, in the final plans, assure that you're capturing all the water to stay where you want it to. And is part of that a condition that might be in cooperation with the highway district to regulate that pooling issue they were talking about?
So I think where that is happening is on the very west end of the county. It's immediately east of this property, on the west end of the county's portion of Lilly Drive. It's sort of a local issue right here, right there. This road is gonna slope entirely to the west, so anything that hits the road is gonna slope down to the next intersection of the west where there's a city storm drain system right there. And the, the engineering department has indicated that they are okay with us discharging to that storm sewer system.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No pressure.
No pressure. Do I need to be sworn in?
You do. Thank you. Can you raise your right hand and confirm the following? Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor-elect, City Council members, thanks for having us here tonight. I know this is our third time here. It's a completely different application this time, and I'm hoping that everything that Shaun has said and that Eric has said will sway you enough that by, say, December 15th, maybe I'd be in the city and, let's see, I might just get in on that. But truthfully, all I'm really trying to do with this, I'm not a developer, I'm just a dad who's got six kids, four of them that live out of the area and can't afford to move back. So it's my way to bring back young, employable, family members who I raised here over the last 20-plus years, and try to bring them back, bring them back to the community. So, yeah, I'm not gonna let them paint the house fuchsia or any weird colors, so we won't do any of that stuff either. But it's just a dad trying to get the kids here, and I think this seems, at this point anyway, it's giving the city more than what we were offering or asking for last time, and hopefully you guys will see it that way. So, thank you.
Thanks, Gene. All right. We have a primary opponent. Is there such a thing out there tonight? All right. I have one other speaker that wants to speak. Chris Chealy. Chris, come on up.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. I honestly don't have much to offer to add to that. I never know what's gonna be presented, but I also know I've, I've been in Gene's position before, and sometimes it's just nice to have somebody come along and speak in favor because oftentimes there are those on the other side. I was born and raised here in Court Lane. I certainly respect that you have difficult decisions to make when it comes to annexation and growth, and don't take that lightly, of course. But I really think that this proposal, as you've seen, is precisely the kind of, of growth that is responsible, it's respectful of the neighborhood. This is not a proposal that's going to have a negative impact, and it is going to have multiple positive impacts that Eric very clearly outlined. And so I just wanted to speak in favor. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Thank you. I have Joy Smart, who is in favor but does not wish to testify, and Tom Smart is in favor and doesn't wish to testify. Hearing none, other close the...
I don't have the works.
Speaking part. All right. Applicant, do you have anything else you want to put? Do you get another 10 minutes that? I'm checking on these notes here. I'm gonna pass them on to my new guy here.
That.
Nothing else? Okay. All right. So council action, we need to develop the findings in order. Anybody wanna jump on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Kristi?
Not so much on that, because I like to rely on Dan for that, but I would just, I would just say that this time around, there's been a lot of, there's a much different proposal and have met a lot of areas that in the past discussions did not. The public road, I think that's, that's a good thing. Fire access. The additional exit, I mean, that would be valuable to a neighborhood if they were, God forbid, ever in threat of fire. The water connectivity is a good thing. The sidewalk connection. And I really appreciate the idea of trying to provide for your family. It's not easy. Everybody would love to be able to do that. And if you have an opportunity to do it, I'd like to see you be able to do that. Last time around, we talked about that, that Geotech thing, and it was done. Last time, it wasn't done, but now it's been done. And so, and Councilman Miller followed up on the groundwater issues, and I feel satisfied with that.
So I'll look for a motion if I could, and then the findings.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to approve the annexation of a 3.19 acre parcel and zoning, the parcel R3 residential at three units per acre, requested by the Eugene P. Hague Jr. Trust located at 2248 East Stanley Hill Road. Court Lane, Idaho pursuant to the following findings in order. Now we do the findings in order.
Okay.
This is like only the third time, I think, we've done this.
You're good at it.
Yes. Might be your last.
And this is the last time I get to do this. So, and please help me with this, because like I said, we haven't done this before. So regarding the findings of fact, which is part A, the city council finds that the facts A1 through A11 have been established on a more than probable than not basis, as shown on the record before it and on the testimony presented at the public hearing. Moving on, which will be section B, the conclusions of law. The city council also finds that the foregoing findings of fact and the following conclusions of law have all been met. The project, the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. Public facilities and utilities are available and adequate for the proposed use. The physical characteristics of the site do make it suitable for the request at this time. The proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and existing land uses. And then the city council pursuant to the following, to the foregoing findings of facts and conclusions approves the requested R3 zoning in conjunction with the annexation. The following conditions to include in the annexation agreement. Should I read all the, I don't need to read all those.
You don't need to read all of that. You just adopt all seven.
Well, then, I'm not going to read them, and then we're gonna move to adopt all the decisions as listed here with no additional conditions required.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Kristi. All right. Discussion. Council? Questions? Nothing? Look for a roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Council Bill 25, this is 1020, ordinance approving the annexation of 3.9 acre parcel and zoning, the parcel R3 residential at three units per acre requested by Eugene Hague Trust located at 2248 East Stanley Hill Road, Court Lane, Idaho.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 251020 once by title only.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Can you read the title, please? Renata?
Council Bill number 25-1020. An ordinance annexing to and declaring to be a part of the city of Court Lane, Cootney County, Idaho specifically described portions of Section 18 Township 50 North, Range 3 West, Boise Meridian. Zoning such specifically described property hereby annexed as R3. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and effective date hereof.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to adopt Council Bill 251020.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion passes. Welcome to our city. Okay, there we are.
Time's a charm.
Time's a charm. All right. Moving on. This next one's quasi judicial again. Amendment number three to the Cortera Annexation Development Agreement to modify Exhibit E, changing the designation of a 10.91 acre C17 zone, zoned church property in the conceptional master plan from urban townhomes to religious assembly located at Hanley Avenue and the Cortera Boulevard in the portion of north half of northwest quarter of Section 33 Township 50. in the portion of north half of northwest quarter of Section 33 Township 51 North, Range 4, Your Keep and Score, West Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho. The legal description is full circle tracks, Lot 2, Block 1, requested by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Let me read this once more time. Please note, the term deliberation in the Idaho Open Meeting Law includes the receipt or exchange of information in any form, including emails, telephone, calls, in-person conversations. In addition, when counsel sits in quasi judicial capacity, its decision can only be based on information presented at the hearing. Therefore, I ask if any council member has received or exchanged information related to this annexation request that is not included in the council packet, please disclose that information now so that the applicant and the public have full knowledge of information you possess. Counsel? All right. All right. Quasi judicial. Any conflict of interest, counsel? Do you have a sign-up sheet? A whole bunch of people have signed up. Oh, it keeps going and going. Take it away.
All right, thanks. That's quite the intro. I'm not sure how much I need to add to that. Thank you, Woody. So tonight, the applicant is the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. As described, it's a 10.91 acre parcel on the north end of Cortair. The request, which is to modify Exhibit E, is in a C17 zoned parcel, which does allow religious assembly by right. So the limitation here comes from Exhibit E, which was part of the development agreement, which defined uses across the site, and it's, pull it up right here. So, before I move on, no legal notices required for this type of amendment. However, it was published in the press and mailed to 29 political subdivisions, and the applicant also posted the area on the 21st last month. So, going back in time a little bit, we have some background and history in here. I won't read everything into the record. Subject that it was annexed into the city, there was a short plat done on the north end. Since that time, the church had purchased that 10.91 acres, and that was labeled as urban townhomes in Exhibit E. So, the desire of the applicant is to use it as a religious assembly, and that's what that request is for tonight, is the use and the change of that. Prior to that, Amendment Number Two, which was reviewed by counsel on the 21st of October, was approved, which allowed for the change of triplexes to senior living and multifamily. So that change, the request would alter that allowed use for religious assembly, as I understand it would be a Mormon temple, to be located on this property. The comprehensive plan does state that this is an urban neighborhood. This was contemplated at the time of annexation. It didn't quite exactly match the map of the zoning that the applicant at that time, but it was brought up that the comprehensive plan is more of a guide, it's not an ordinance, and counsel saw to it that it would be approved with the C17 where it is today. Also, in this urban neighborhood, you can see that the compatible zoning is R17, R is for residential, so 17 units per gross acre, and R34 by special use permit, neighborhood commercial, community commercial, C17, which is what the property is zoned, and C17L, which is a limited commercial zone. So that's what it looks like from the standpoint of the plan up close, the context of the site. This is the zoning, so you can see surrounded by R17 plus Exhibit E and the uses that were pre-approved through the development agreement, R8 a little to the south as well as to the north, C17L for the water tower, C17L down here for the future well site, and R3 neighboring it to the, to the southeast as well as the industrial park, which is manufacturing. So, the justification, let me get a few pages ahead here. So approval requires demonstrating that the amendment is necessary and reasonable and also in the public interest. This ensures that amendments serve a public benefit, such as adapting to changed conditions while protecting community goals. So the applicant provided in their request letter their justification, I won't read all of it into the record, just hitting the highlights, change in ownership and use, compatibility with zoning and surrounding uses, low impacts and compatibility, the public benefit and community enhancement, as well as consistency with the comprehensive plan. Onto department comments. We'll start with fire. So the fire department stated that they expect similar or lower call volume from religious assembly compared to urban townhomes and has no concern with the change in use type. Parks Department had no issue with the proposed change to religious assembly. Planning, it's a little bit long, but basically says that planning doesn't have a problem, although the 2,800 ERU is still in place. Police stated that it anticipates no significant change in calls for service from religious assembly compared to urban townhomes and has no objection. Streets and engineering has no concerns or issues with the requested change to religious assembly. Because the property remains within the newly annexed property, traffic impacts will be quantified in Cortair's concurrency analysis, which will be submitted with each phase of the development or every two years, whichever comes first. Wastewater, the change from residential to religious assembly does not create issues for the wastewater utility. And finally, water, water has no issues with the proposed change. So it's a much simpler one than the last one, but City Council will need to consider this request and amend Exhibit E, which would change a site-specific place-type from urban townhomes to religious assembly and either approve, approve with modifications, or deny the request. With that, that finishes my presentation, and I stamp for questions.
Questions for Sean? Mr. Gook?
I don't have a question, Sean, but just a clarification. So this action is being limited to just modifying the development agreement to allow a religious assembly. It has nothing to do with connections to the rest of the city.
Correct. Just the use. There's another piece I'd like to bring up, just in case the question does come to light. Talked about height over time, the tower, the existing water tower is 160 feet, if anybody wanted to know.
Kiki?
Just clarify this again. The underlying zoning was C17, which allows religious assembly, but the development agreement, as it was presented in their site plan, changed to townhomes. So that's what the amendment is undoing, is the townhomes back to an allowable use.
Correct.
Okay.
Exhibit E.
All right. Other questions? Primary opponent. Anybody wanna speak to this?
Think, Woody, on that highlighted list, there was somebody.
Proponent?
Sure. I don't know if I'm a primary opponent or not, but I'll fill in for the applicant, Mayor.
You have to swear in there if you could.
Thank you. Sorry, multitasking over here. Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Renata, I'm Johnny Watson, 1152 Bond Avenue of Rexburg, Idaho. At least I was when I got here this evening. Wow, Sean pretty well did a heck of a job and very thorough. Thank you. We're here as the first step in beginning the approval process for our project. This begins us on a very exciting process of working with the city of Coeur d'Alene on working towards our facility, and we appreciate your consideration and hopefully approval to the amendment of this development agreement. Sean really covered everything. The parcel was targeted due to the C17 zoning, where religious assemblies are allowed by right, period. We obviously aren't in the business of residential facilities, and we look forward to providing another religious facility to your great community and working here. I also have President Brad Moss that I'm gonna ask to come up, and he probably has the ability to shorten this comment section quite a bit, if that's all right with you. I'll reserve the rest of my comments for, depending on comments during the comment section, or I can answer any questions that you have currently.
Any questions for Johnny? Thanks, Johnny.
Thank you.
Brad Moss? Welcome, Brad.
Thank you. Do I, should I swear in?
Yes, Brad.
Let's do it.
All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council members, thank you. Good evening. My name's Brad Moss. I'm from the area. I've lived here 15 years. I have seven kids. We've raised them all here, ages one to 15. I'm mostly known as husband to Mama Bird. My wife owns all the birdie's pie shops here locally. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak and for the thoughtful and professional way you've handled this process. I might also wanna say that I wanna thank the rest of the city administration for the patience they've given us. In addition, I've been to a few city council meetings, and every time, it reminds me of the time and effort you put in. So thank you for that. I serve as a stake president for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. That's a 10-year calling, as it were, and it's volunteer, it's like a volunteer lay leader who oversees several congregations within the geographic area. So all together tonight, I represent about 10,000 members of our church in the Coeur d'Alene area. Many of our members feel strongly about this amendment, and they were eager to come here, attend and speak and support, but out of respect for your time and to keep this meeting a bit more orderly, I asked them not to overly fill the chamber and to fill your parking lot. There are a few that will give some thoughts that I thought were important, but there are all, there's also others here tonight that have come individually prepared and to focus on land, a land use issue. And they're willing to speak if it is helpful, but it's also, they're very comfortable not speaking if it, if it doesn't provide anything helpful for this, for this meeting, and if you don't think their comments are necessary. Our goal is to simply support the process and respect your time. A few weeks ago, during a local news interview, the cameraman pulled me aside, and he happened to live in Indian Meadows, and it was an awesome moment. He talked to me about his concern of traffic. He expressed those concerns with kindness and respect. When I explained that our hopeful use generates less traffic than a neighborhood of condos, he seemed genuinely surprised and even relieved to learn that this amendment should help reduce the overall impact on his neighborhood. I appreciated that conversation, and it reflected the thoughtful and community-minded spirit we all value. Again, I speak tonight on behalf of thousands of members who support this amendment and appreciate the careful, the careful way you're considering it. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to participate, and I know Johnny is, he stands ready to answer any question you may have after the public comments. So thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate that. So we need to move on to a primary opponent. Sorry, I was upside down here. So is there anybody here that wants to beat the other side of the drum? Hearing none, we'll move on. So I have a list of folks that I would like to at least address. Meakin Morton is in favor but does not wish to testify, and my reading is tough because the writing's tougher. Jess Gary is in favor, does not wish to testify. Tyler Morton is in favor and does not wish to testify. Carlos Rios is in favor, does not wish to testify. Jacob Mungar is in favor, does not wish to testify. Spencer Session is in favor, does not wish to testify. Becky Perez is in favor, does not want, wish to testify. Thomas Pearson is in favor, does not wish to testify. Nancy Barr is in favor, does not wish to testify. Mike Kruger is in favor, does not wish to testify. Aram Goodman is in favor, does not wish to testify. Mark Snow is in favor, does not wish to testify. Adam Dupree is in favor, does not wish to testify. Todd Herelem would like to testify. Todd?
I'm a consultant with the applicant.
You're good? All right, thank you. And Richard Dance is in favor and didn't tell me if he wants to testify.
I'd like to.
Step up.
My name is Richard Dance. I'm a citizen of Hayden, but I do a lot with the congregations. I will swear first.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes. Anyway, just wanted to say it's a beautiful building. It'll be a great addition to Coeur d'Alene. You'll be happy to have it, and you're all invited to come visit it during the open house. Thank you.
Great. Wow, this guy knows what he's doing, doesn't he? Richard, thank you, Richard. I have three other VIPs that wanna speak. Steve Griffiths, come on down.
I'm Hoda. Would you like, my name is Steve Griffiths?
Yes, please. Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quickly, Mayor, Mayor-elect, City Council members, and an amazing staff. I enjoyed the 297 pages. It's a sad thing. My wife texted me, though, and said I am not to be a part of any more 297-page meetings. Quickly, if in fact, from a math standpoint, that we're measuring homes, single-family homes, as 10 visits per day, then this change will allow for probably one-tenth of the, of the traffic or less than would be included in any single-family residential. There's no retail, no residential, no multifamily, no mixed-use density, obviously with, with simply a religious facility, will not be affected. And so it should, based on the discussions that we had earlier with the developer and others that were concerned, eliminate some of the major traffic issues. Secondly, there will be an extensive public open space area that has not been talked about surrounding the proposed Christian structure. This open space will be well manicured and landscaped. The cost for this continued beautification will be covered by the owners of the property, and it is public, so everybody will have the opportunity to be able to walk through and enjoy. And you will be pleased with the result, and we have many examples within our area. Moses Lake, Spokane Valley, Portland, Seattle. There will be an extensive open house, and I'd like to reiterate what Richard Dance said. You are most welcome to the open house. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Brad Moss? You still happy? You're okay? I have you on the list twice, darn. And Addison Wallace. Addison? Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Can swear in?
Yes, thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God? nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the city council. My name is Addison Moss, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak today on the impact this will have on our youth and youth worshiping. So the building of the Coeur d'Alene Temple is very important to me, so much so that I got off work and got practice pre-approved so I can miss tonight and be here. Personally, I try to go to our nearest temple, the Spokane Temple, several times a month for worship, although I know friends that go even more than that. But because of school and other demands, many of our local youth end up making those trips to the Spokane Temple either early in the mornings or late at evenings. Church worship is important to me and many of my peers, and we often travel when it is dark or in suboptimal weather, which is 40 minutes to the closest temple for Coeur d'Alene residents, and it can be even closer to an hour for Coeur d'Alene, or Hayden residents, or people living around the lake. Although we drive carefully and sacrifice time from our work, sports, and other activities, it would be safer and more conducive to frequent worship if it was only a 10-minute drive for Coeur d'Alene residents. So I ask you on behalf of hundreds of youth in our region to please support this proposed amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Addison. That's all I have on this list. Is there any people that just have this passion that they have to get it off your chest? Amy bringing back some memories. Welcome, Ames. Swear in?
Thank you, sorry, multitasking still. Do you solemnly swear and/or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, of course.
So great to see you all. Honorable Mayor McEvers, Mayor-elect Gookin, and city council members, I have missed all of you. I must admit, though, that I would much prefer to be sitting over there behind a computer screen than standing here at the microphone. Thank you for the opportunity to present public comment at today's hearing regarding the request for an amendment to the Cortair Development Agreement, and thank you for your service to our community. I know from firsthand experience that your service has always been dedicated to the best interests of the city of Coeur d'Alene and its citizens. As some of you probably know, I am a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. In addition, as executive assistant to the mayor and council, city administrator, and municipal services department prior to my retirement five years ago now, I became quite familiar with the processes involved in bringing items forward to the city council and the efforts by city staff to provide the council with accurate and well-researched information which you have in front of you. For that reason, I have only a couple of brief comments that I would like to make in support of the amendment to the Cortair Development Agreement. As you are aware, religious assembly is permitted usage in a C-17 zone. Institutional uses such as religious buildings are more consistent with the community-serving intent of the master plan of Cortair and how it was proposed many years ago. Compared to simply adding more residential units, a religious assembly use should be a welcomed amendment for those who live in the adjacent neighborhoods to the south. This new use would lower the traffic impact compared to the current approved use. I know that anything that reduces traffic impact is definitely something that I would appreciate. And that's it. Thanks again, mayor and council, for your service and for your consideration of the amendment to the Cortair Development Agreement, and congratulations to you, Mayor-elect Gookin, and I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas season. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Anyone else like to make a few comments? I'm at the end of the list.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
And...
Can I get your name?
It's Sean Hawker from the school district. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I know that's the face, I couldn't remember the name. Thanks.
Yeah. I can be super brief as well. I did prepare a statement, and I just want to, again, the school district has evaluated this amendment. As you can see on the map, we are immediate neighbors, so this is something we really needed to look at. For all the reasons that have already been explained, we feel like the traffic flow will be much better with this amendment. As you all know, homes and schools generally have a rush hour about the same time, and at some juncture, we're planning to potentially put a school on that property, and so having a religious facility nearby, not only will it lessen that traffic load, it will also create some incredible opportunities for partnerships that we have throughout the school district with religious institutes. You know, for instance, if there's ever a need to vacate a school because of a gas leak or heaven forbid a fire or something like that, you know, having a facility nearby that you can walk kids to is super great. So we have evaluated this amendment, and I'll just leave it at that. We are in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Mr. Mayor, could I just comment to Mr. Hawker? Thank you for coming to speak about the impact to the school district. Oftentimes, council questions that we don't know, and for you to take the time tonight, we really appreciate it.
All right. That's it. I'm looking for council's direction here.
Close the...
Oh, we have to close the hearing. Thank you. Closed.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 25070, which is approving amended Exhibit E to the Annexation and Development Agreement with Kootenay Land Company et al., changing the designation of a 10.91 acre C-17 zone property in the conceptual master plan from urban townhomes to religious assembly.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, council? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think that the information presented has been very well researched, very thoughtful. I think it'll make a nice addition to our community. The traffic concern has been addressed. The police and fire department had no issues with it, the school district no issues with it, so it really seems like a win-win for everybody, so I'm happy to support it.
All right. Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
All right. Congratulations, you guys. Did you want to say anything, Johnny? You're a happy guy. Look at him, he's...
Very happy.
All right, thanks.
Anybody, one of you guys wants to go out and have a drink to celebrate? Let me know.
All right, look for a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. We're done. Thanks, folks. Thanks for coming out.
When are they scheduled?